And it is six thirty. And I call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel fourteen. And a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledges for the flag of this direction. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or a video recording of this meeting, please notify me as vice chair, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who's making recordings today? Andrew, can you read the mission and vision?
Absolutely. First, the mission. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. Public comments. Please limit comments to two minutes per individual to items not on the meeting agenda. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, where the individual may request an item to be placed on a future, on a future agenda. Okay, this is great. First item on the agenda, update from Health Agent Scott McGann.
Tell me you can all hear me. I bought new ones. I was sick of the old ones. How's everybody doing tonight?
Great, great, good for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm in the middle of a board of health meeting, so I'm here anyway, no big deal. Can we share screen for a sec?
Sure.
How's that working?
Very good.
So everybody can see the chart. As you can see, there's a little bit more red and a little bit more yellow throughout the state. You know, there's been, if you look at the daily chart, the daily updates, there are more cases, especially on the North Shore. We remain on the green. If going to the next chart down, you can see what we do on a weekly basis. You can see that our incidents rate over per hundred thousands up a bit. It's still better than what the county was for that two-week timeframe and much better than the states. We are testing a lot of people. Look at the fourteen-day total number of tests, that's over a thousand a week. So that's, that's robust amount of testing, especially compared to earlier in the year. So that being said, I mean, the more you test, the more you find you do. I am seeing some asymptomatic positives, which are in that fifteen number, so the number that you see for two weeks. Where the cases are coming from, it's sort of the same thing. It's some healthcare workers, it's some asymptomatic being routinely tested types. There are some that are sick with it, and there are some that are in the between. Our hospital was doing really well until I looked today, and it looks like there was three, and then one in the ICU, which is a bit higher than previous. So hospitalizations statewide are up, you know, from about, I think they're up about fifty or so over the last few weeks. So the state's on it, it's a bit of an increase. I would say since this two eighty-one number came out last Wednesday, we're at two eighty-five now. We're at two eighty-three on, on two eighty-two on Friday. So we have had a good weekend last, early part of this week, knock on wood, everybody. So not much different from what I told you, other than we are, we are having a few more positives. Our percent positivity is still below one, which is a very key number. You always want to have the, a number below one says that it's not, there's not a lot of community spread occurring. So that's the, you know, the metric on that. Barnstable County and Cape Cod Healthcare basically says the same thing for the whole county that there's no real necessary rhyme or reason for free between the cases, they're just sort of popping up. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of our tests are got to do with, we do have a lot of, we have our hospital, we have, you know, the knees, the hips, the procedures and things of that nature. So that's where some of our tests are coming from. And occasionally, we are getting some that are popping up positive and they're asymptomatic. So, you know, it's, it's not as good as, you know, late August when we were in that less than five. But I think when you start testing over a thousand people a week, it's going to be hard to be less than five. And so I hope the trend over the last four days is kind of where we're at. We're at one or less per day, you know, or even less, one every other day, one every third day. And we can keep that number, you know, ideally, less than five a week is, would be nice for me to see. Is there any specific questions? Oh, I, I went back to this chart, we use this chart quite a bit. This is our weekly from the beginning. This chart's all our cases on a weekly basis. So we're, we're on the higher part of what we have had since June. And part of it's the number of tests, part of it is there's more cases. I like to see it obviously get back to what we had back in that July period when we were down at like three a week, and also again in August. So I like to see that trend go down and, and hopefully it does. So as far as cases, that's where we stand. And you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Scott? Um, so Scott, I was looking at the data saying that we are doing more testing now. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. And then I'm wondering, because it, it does seem that probably some of our seasonal crowd has left, though probably some are staying longer. So it seems that we'd have less people now, but more people are getting tested. So I'm just, I'm interested in why that trend is happening.
A lot of it is people are going in for their procedures. Colonoscopies, things of that nature. I have a bad tooth that needs to be done, maybe they'll test me for that, or things of that nature. That's part of it, because I see some of those positives pop up every week. Otherwise, you know, it's a good question, why we're testing more. That, that would be probably the number one reason, I could think, you know.
Thanks. Any other questions for Scott? Joan?
Scott, I appreciate you adjusting the microphone. I heard you better than I've heard you ever since. Each one of these meetings, I think our lack of questions is not, you know, that we're not curious and there's not topics. I think what you're doing each time here is a good baseline, that if, when something does happen, then we, we get kind of in tune with what the average week should look like. And if there's some kind of anomaly, then we notice it. So I, we appreciate you doing this every time.
Yeah, no problem. And the anomaly is gonna, it, it's gonna vary. So if we got, let's say unfortunately, the, one of our nursing facilities had thirty cases, it may not be that relevant to you. But six on a particular team sport or in a class is much more. So it depends on where the cases come from too as well, right? So, yeah, Lori, myself, Jennifer, you know, Reese Felder, we're constant contact. So, you know, if I see anything, the first, the first time I, I get up in the morning, this is my routine. A lot of the Maven cases are exported overnight into the computer. And the first thing I do in the morning is check Maven website to see what's going on. If I start seeing, you know, something relevant to school, that email will be sent out before I make it to work in that day. So that's kind of how we're gonna roll with it. Yeah.
Any other questions for Scott? Scott, this is wonderful, and as John said, we appreciate your being here each week. And if you're able, could you stick around for Lori's presentation in case there are any additional questions?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Lori, next, the update from the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted, you know, today, we're, the full model began, full days, five through twelve. We have week A in for the week. And at our elementary schools, we have all of our students, a very joyous day in our schools. We were happy to see everyone. And just again, many thanks to our parents and to our students. The opening today with double the students was remarkable. It was very smooth, things went well. So we appreciate everybody partnering to make this work for all of us. Later on the agenda, I'm going to recommend to you to approve a COVID-nineteen test program for our employees. And I believe it's, just checking if Dr. Parkinson is on yet. Not yet, so we might pick him up a little bit later. But I wanted Scott to just stay on, we were contacted by Representative Fernandez. And it's a free, one-time baseline program. It's a saliva test, but it is a PCR test. And it will be volunteer only for our employees. But it is something that we can offer them, since it is a free program. And Representative Fernandez connected us with through MIT. And it was through, also Concentric by Ginkgo, which is, who's offering the free testing for employees. So Scott, I just wanted to know if you, if there's anything you wanted to add to that? And why this may or may not be a good idea?
Well, whenever you can get a test, get a test. Right? And it's a PCR, and I think it's a new technology. So you would be helping out new technologies work through their, their system, is what I had the impression of it. So I think, you know, it's a good, it's a good idea if we can. The key is you want a rapid, cheap, and very accurate test. And if this helps us work towards that goal, the not-too-distant future, I think it's a great, great idea.
I don't know if anyone had, my scouts here, if you had any questions about the testing.
Leah. I just have questions about the detail, what would, what would that look like? So it's going to be set up in all of the schools, is that right, at testing site?
Yes, so our nurses have volunteered to oversee the, the testing program. So we'll have, we'll be able to operate at each school. And it's, they'll sign, anyone that wants to, any employee that would like to, they'll sign up ahead of time through Concentric. So it's all online, it's all confidential information. So they'll sign up, give their consent, they take a short survey, and then they're all set. Then the day of testing, they'll go in and they'll, they actually self-administer, but the nurse is there to oversee it. It's a saliva test, so they actually spit in a, like a test tube. And, you know, basically put the top on and shake it. There's a, and then it goes into, it's all by scan instead of name, so it's all coded. And then the results will go directly to Dr. Parkinson, he's volunteered to be. So it really doesn't go to anybody in the, in the school system per se. And then he will just report out the number that actually took the test and the number and percentage of positive, negative, and hopefully they're all, they're all negative. But, and, and so we'll have those kind of broad numbers. But we will not have specific or confidential information on any employee. And it is a benefit to the employee, and that's why, it's, it's volunteer.
And how long does it take to get the result?
Forty-eight to seventy-two hours.
And before you go to questions here, Scott, I saw your hand up. Did you want to add something before the next question?
Yeah, I think it, it would register, it's going to be a legit test. So if there was a positive, there'll be VNA contact tracing occurring on it. And what, what, can I add one thing from the previous conversation? Is another reason is a lot of, all the nursing homes and all the healthcare facilities have gotten really deep into testing their employees on a random basis, because the question about how, why we have a thousand tests a week, that was the other one that popped in my head, just wanted to bring that up.
Andrew, I saw your hand up first.
Thank you. I guess I was trying to follow up on, what I thought you said, Lori, is that this was a one-time shot? Because obviously, a negative is only good as that day. And then I just heard Scott talking about the random testing. Is there any opportunity to have that's happening on a more frequent basis?
So we have not been offered any opportunity yet for this. So this is one that does give a baseline. And what they do say is that it can add some comfort to, to the employees if they know, you know, say, three hundred taken, and at least you know that. You know, hopefully we have six hundred and fifty, if they want to do that. Like it, you know, raises the confidence level. I know it's a one-time, but it still gives you a sense in that one time of how we're doing.
Right, which I think is really good to have, you know, some type of baseline. But I also wouldn't want people to be thinking anything, that that means anything more than this is just a catch-up timeline.
Absolutely, it's just one time.
Great, awesome.
So the one time, is it like, what's the timeline? Could you have it any time between now and June? Is it any time in the next week? What is that like?
Excellent, excellent question. So we're trying to set it up over a four-day period. So all schools, over that four-day period, will either have, depending on the number of employees that sign up. So it may be one or two days or three days at a school. But over a four-day period, we will have all the testing done and sent in.
Great, thank you. Wait, any other questions? Did you want to wait for, just to see Dr. Parkinson pop some? Scott, I see your finger.
Do you mind if I do a plug for a upcoming flu clinic while we're on the call?
Sure.
All right. October, we got a drive-through flu clinic on October twenty-sixth from two to five at the Gus Canty. You need to pre-register, it's a drive-through, you don't have to get out of your car. So I have to do it by appointment, because I can't have five hundred cars show up on Main Street, right? So I don't, I've maybe got fifty or eighty people registered so far. So if anybody's listening on TV and you want to get a flu shot for your kid, yourselves, whoever in your family, just call the health department.
Does there later register online?
They register with us, they're just gonna call. It was, there's some online registering. My only issue with that is I do a lot of elderly on this flu clinic, and not everybody's savvy on the computer. So I decided to go old-school, call the health department, and we'll, we'll put you together. I got an Excel spreadsheet, I thought that would be a simpler way of doing it. Yeah, it's five oh eight four nine five seven four eight five. And we'll just register you for, there's gonna be about fifteen to twenty cars every fifteen minutes, a couple hundred shots we have on this clinic. You know, so if you haven't gotten one, if you want to do it and not have to get out of your car, go to Convenient MD or CVS or Stop &amp; Shop, we will have some for you.
That's fantastic, thank you for the plug, I appreciate it.
Can we make sure that that's blasted through our schools too? To all the families? I, I know that I was having trouble just getting the flu shot, just with work schedule and everything. So I'm sure that there are many parents who are having a hard time getting their kids vaccinated right now. So that's great.
Yeah.
That was gonna be my question, is, is it for adults only, or is this also kids?
Okay, so here, here's the deal, it's for anybody over age six months, okay? Six months to one hundred and six. There's no double dose for the, for the over sixty-five. I do have about eighty to a hundred state allocated vaccines for uninsured. So if you don't, if you have insurance, use your insurance card, it gets billed to the insurance, you don't pay. I do have some uninsured, under eighteen doses as well. So, you know, it's, it's, it's wide open. Obviously, once the appointments are filled up, it's filled up. And I'll keep a list, a waiting list, and if it's worthwhile, because it is quite a big deal to shut down, you know, the Gus Canty. Well, not that there's a lot going on at the Gus Canty, but, you know, set up the cones, get the detail, make all the phone calls. So if I have to set up another one, I just need to know if I get at least a hundred people before I would start doing another one. So if we need it, we'll do it, do a second one.
Thank you for that. If I could do a follow-up, we've, we've been running a flu clinic, the Bay Area's been helping us. So the last couple of weeks, this Thursday, I think is our last one at East. And we've had quite a number of our employees. So this, this was another employee benefit, so it was for the employee and the family. We've had quite a number of our employees take advantage of the flu shot as well. So we're pleased. And we'll ask Joan, as the next meeting is the year of relief update, on the number of flu shots we were able to take out as well. And then Scott and I have been talking, we are keeping track of the students, because they're supposed to have their flu shot by the end of December. And depending on the number that we're seeing, you know, and we may need to open up another clinic for our students to give them opportunity. So we're, we're tracking, we're tracking things, and Joan can give us an update next time.
Right, Leah, sorry, I'm sorry, so many questions. But I'm, I'm wondering if that's, if it's possible to give flu shots during school day to students? Just thinking about the future, if needed, because it is hard for transportation and things to get some families to the flu clinics that are after school.
So Joan's taking notes, I can see. So I agree, so I'm not sure what that entails.
Well.
But I'll have Joan look into that.
Yeah, I can add to that. We are sharing the same nurses that do our contact tracing at the VNA, also do the flu clinics, and they do it for thirteen other towns. So it might be a little, you might have to really schedule that ahead of time, you know, because there, there, you know, there's not, there's not an indefinite amount of, you know, VNA nurses.
Can I just follow up? Because my, my fear around this is that for our families that are kind of most vulnerable and not, not having transportation, not having access to getting themselves to even a drive-through due to numerous reasons, we want to ensure that their kids can still come to school. So that's just, that's my push for thinking of ways that we can work with families.
I, I, I think I'll have the doses. I mean, like I said, I have, I think I just got forty more today of doses. So the uninsured doses that the state allocated to me, there may be enough, you know. So I would offer those to, to the schools, you know, whatever's left over from my clinic.
Thank you, Scott, you're always a big help.
Before I go, do you want any good news about the flu? Yeah, the, the southern, it's been the lowest flu in the southern hemisphere, which is their winter. So that's what you look at to see what this winter's going to be for us. And it's been the lightest it's ever been, because of the masks and the social distancing, it works, so.
That is good news, thank you for asking.
No, I just have another one more update. If we could ask Principal Gans to join us?
Scott, thank you so much.
Take care. Thank you. So I've asked Principal Gans to join us tonight to give an update on our sports. We've actually made a couple of new decisions since we last gave an update, so. Mary?
Hi, everyone. So one of the updates is that we had initially said no spectators were allowed, and we reconsidered that for a variety of reasons. Other Cape and Island League teams were allowing home spectators. We had many parents and guardians saying that they would love to be able to come and watch their children play. And students were reaching out to me saying, please, can I just have, you know, a, a parent, a stepfather, somebody come and watch? So Kathleen Burke and I reviewed some other districts' policies, and we came up with a decision to allow each student athlete can have up to two immediate household members attend a game. And it's been great so far. They have to register when they enter, they have to wear masks, they have to social distance. They've been extremely cooperative, helpful, and appreciative so far. So it's, it's been very well received, and it's been very helpful.
Great.
Thank you, Mary. Did you want to mention something about the football?
Oh, yes, excuse me, I'm sorry. So the MIA also, they suspended, suspended, sounds funny. They have decided to allow out-of-season workouts for various teams, because they, they usually don't allow that. And they call that, they, they suspended that rule where they prohibit it, which sounds like a double negative, but they're now allowing it. So for football, we are considering allowing Joe Morenci, our new head football coach, to put, he's put together a very good workout plan that follows all the state guidelines. There's no contact, it would be training and conditioning and some drills. So we are working to start that. We've also had some parents and students advocate for that as well, so that we can get them just together as a team, although socially distanced as a team and working out and conditioning, hopefully looking forward to February when we may be able to play football.
Is that it for my presentation?
Hi, Mary, I was just wondering, are, have you heard any, Scott, about how the new rules are going? Like, like at field hockey, they had to change the rules, or soccer, you can't use your head and stuff?
Oh, so far, so good. I haven't heard any complaints, people have been very compliant. I think the biggest adjustment actually has been for the officials, because they're the ones who have to enforce the rules and understand them. But the, the students and the coaches have done great.
Great, this is great.
On the fall two, has the state set a deadline date on that yet?
I don't believe so. I could be wrong, but I don't believe so. They, they seem to be saying, you know, we're, everything like that, we're still waiting and watching.
Okay, thank you.
Leah, I'm sorry to answer the question. This is actually a policy question. So with the, the change in having spectators, I think we have a policy that basically just allows you to make updates with COVID things. Is that right, is that what this would fall under, or does this have to go through?
Melissa's nodding yes.
I would think, the, the way I read that policy that we passed, that it would fall under the policy in the updates version, essentially exactly what you said. Okay, so that we just leave it? We don't have to go back and reinvest the wheel on it, it just falls, and that's why it was worded that way, so that we could comply as things came along. Okay, so just for the public to understand that, it's not that we, policy is something that we need to approve, but because of COVID, we have a policy in place to protect ourselves. A policy in place to allow the superintendent to make decisions according to COVID needs.
Yep.
Okay.
Also, I should clarify, we don't allow away spectators to come to games. So visiting teams, their, their, you know, spectators are not allowed. And our spectators are not allowed to go to most visiting teams, other teams are not allowing that as well.
Any other questions for Mary? No, no, thank you so much, we appreciate the update.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mary. Good news.
Hi. So next up is the presentation of the Certificate of Academic Excellence.
Lori? Thank you very much, this is always a proud moment. If we could ask Siobhan Morris to join us?
Hi.
Hi, Siobhan, it's nice to see you. This evening, we present the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. This award will be given to a Falmouth High School student who has distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. The winner of this year's award goes to a young woman who has been in honors and AP classes since her freshman year and has been involved in multiple musical ensembles across southeastern Massachusetts. Additionally, she has been a Project Three Fifty-One ambassador, an organization that provides high-quality, enriching community service across the state. One of her greatest achievements, in my opinion, is her being presented with the two thousand and nineteen No Guff Award, where a student is chosen by their peers to celebrate respect, positivity, community, and unity. She exhibits, exhibits these qualities daily in her school and personal life. May I present Siobhan Morris with this year's winner of the Mass Academic Excellence Award. Siobhan, we're very proud of you.
Thank you so much, it's an honor, I'm really excited.
Congratulations.
So I, first met Siobhan when I first, in two thousand and eighteen, when I arrived, she reached out to me. At that time, you were a freshman, and reached out to me to introduce herself and introduce Project Three Fifty-One. And I knew at that moment, during that summer, for her to take that initiative, that we certainly had a leader among us. So I've been very proud of her and watched her career so far. So we're very, we are very proud of you, I'm so happy to be able to present this. And Principal Gans, I don't know if you would like to add something at this time?
Yeah, Siobhan, I'm so proud of you. You know, I've known you forever, you're awesome, you've always been incredible. You're so helpful to your, to your colleagues, your peers, and your teachers, and I'm just so proud of you. And I know Ms. Nims would be very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for Siobhan when she goes away?
Okay. Well, thank you. Congratulations. I know there's one. Terry, are you thinking about college? I mean, are you looking ahead to colleges at all or?
Uh, yeah, it's way more work than I ever thought it was going to be. I have like 20 schools on my list right now. So I'm just working on narrowing that down first. Just getting everything done. But yeah.
Would you have any idea what you want to study?
Yes, I really want to major in astrophysics and then do dance and probably work with a nonprofit on the side. That's what I'm thinking about. Looking forward to all that.
Astrophysics. That's impressive.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Take care.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good night. Uh, next, presentation of enrollment for 2021.
This is the presentation that we, um, the presentation, uh, usually, uh, in September, we present. It was on, uh, the schedule last time, but we had a later start this year and made more sense, um, to talk about enrollment after we were a little bit more settled, um, in school. So first, um, I'm going to talk about the student enrollment. This year, we have 3,095 students. The breakdown, uh, High School at 817, Lawrence at 510, Morse Pond at 497, East Bounder 266, uh, 408, North Bounder at 306, T Ticket, um, at, uh, 248. And we do have 43, um, out district, um, students. So here's our enrollment, um, by, um, grade. Um, we are down in pre-K by about 23 students and down in kindergarten by about 32 students. Certainly under, um, you know, our current conditions, um, makes, makes a lot of sense and, and would be expected. We're very proud that every one of our juniors returned this year, um, uh, for their senior year. So that's, um, um, very exciting to have all of our, um, students back to graduate with us this year. And, um, our normal, uh, from eighth grade to ninth grade, um, did not actually increase and stayed great in the average of, um, 50 students that we normally, um, uh, decreased by between eighth and ninth grade year. In school choice, um, we are, um, we have, um, we accepted 20 this year. We did not accept the normal, uh, amount of students. Uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, because we ended up having to go a hybrid in our five to 12, that, um, the seats were as many seats as possible were available to our students. So we're 20 accepted. Um, we had declined 28 and 48 is, you know, around the normal average of, uh, applications we've done each year. So it is down a little bit, um, as, as you can see there. So our overall enrollment is down, um, by 194 students. Um, this is pretty typical, um, across the Cape. In addition to be down about 27% of pre-K and 14% at school choice, uh, our homeschool, uh, enrollment has increased by about 30, 35 applicants, um, over, um, our normal, uh, applications that, that we get. And again, this is actually, um, uh, less than typical than a lot of districts are seeing across the Cape. So, um, but, but certainly understandable, um, at this time. Uh, our reopening data, uh, from our pre-K to four, we have in-person learning, we have 998 students. And in the 100% remote learning, uh, we have 230. At grades five and six, we have 375 in the hybrid in-person learning. And we have 100, 122 in the 100% remote learning. And at the five, six school, we did open the remote learning center and we have about 85 students, um, that participate in remote learning. At grade seven and eight, we have 403 students in the hybrid in-person learning. And we have 107, uh, students in the 100% remote learning. At grades nine through 12, we have 629 students in the hybrid in-person learning. And we have 188 participating in the 100% remote. So, um, overall, we have 73% on the in-person and hybrid in-person model and 27% at 100% remote. Now, this is up, uh, from, uh, August, when we were planning and it was about a 20, uh, 2080 split. Uh, so there are more, uh, students that have moved to the remote model, um, since that time. We also, um, one of the, uh, benefits to employees that we offered was the, um, allowing, uh, children of employees to attend both weeks. Desi, um, had asked us, Commissioner Riley personally had, um, said there was an expectation that the children of teachers would be able to attend, um, both weeks. And I think the overall concern was that we wanted to make sure that the teachers came back so that we had, uh, the full, um, staff for, you know, being able to open in-person, um, for all of our children to be able to attend. Uh, so that was a concern at that time. I did make the decision that, uh, to open up that, um, offer to all employees at Falmouth Public Schools to make it an employee benefit because we value all of our employees and we need all of our employees to, you know, to return and be here. Um, and, and we do have, um, kind of number. In addition to the, um, the employees, childrens and ones that, uh, actually, um, assigned up for that. Going to run down the numbers at each school, um, that we have in-person, um, both weeks. So this includes employees, uh, children and our high need students. So the total number of students that are in both weeks at Falmouth High School, it's 39 students. At Lawrence, it's 33 students. And at Morse Pond, it's 48 students. Um, so that's right now, we have them full-time. And, um, I'll take any questions if you want to.
Leah, um, so I, one thing that has just kind of baffled me is this idea that we can support our local staff with local students, but we have a lot of staff who live in other districts and their children go to school in other districts. And I, I know the commissioner did not address this, but I know it's a challenge. Um, could, could you just speak a little bit about how we support staff who have school, children who are in Bourne or children who are in Mashpee and might be on the one week on, one week off? Is there a way to support them to?
So, um, Commissioner Riley did, uh, ask the districts to, um, those that are taking students from, um, employees from other, other, um, districts as well. And we were just unable to, we didn't, we do not have the room, um, to do that. So, we, basically it was about, um, two weeks, got extended a little bit, uh, for planning purposes with, um, they, you know, our own employees. Uh, and I tell you that, uh, at the, the schools of the numbers between the, uh, high need students uh, and the, you know, the, the employees, um, that actually took advantage of this. We just don't have the room to add or opt. So we, we weren't able to do that. And I understand that it's, it's, um, it's important, but the, the, the children that actually attend Falmouth schools were the ones that were doing, uh, through the map, that option.
I guess my question was, will other, do other districts, is it, has there been talk with other districts of supporting those students? But our students?
No. Can I just?
Sure.
Yeah. So we have good friends who live off Cape and, um, say, they, say, they live in, um, Medfield, but they work in Newton. This, the towns in the surrounding area have, have come to an agreement. You're a teacher in Newton, but you live in Medfield. Your child can go to Medfield 100%. Is that what you're trying to kind of?
Yes. So, yeah. My, so my question is, is there, has there been any talk with Cape schools for our employees who have, who live in Bourne or who live in Mashpee or live in Sandwich, who are trying to juggle children who are in hybrid models and have to be at work in Falmouth?
So we have had those conversations. And thank you. Sorry, I didn't understand the question. Okay. Cause, cause we did have, um, there were, um, some of our employees that had wanted to choice into Falmouth. So I guess I was going, that was the question I was actually answering. So we have, um, we've talked about that, but I don't think that anyone can actually handle, um, the amount of students to be able to do that and be able to still have as many students in person, um, as we can. So, you know, a lot of schools had, across the Cape, has had to move to the hybrid model, even at the younger grades, because it's just difficult to get a lot of students in. So, um, I, some of the other districts are offering the same thing that we did. Um, but that's as far as I know, that, that's been offered.
So I guess my follow-up question to that is if we have staff who are trying to juggle that, are there ways that we support them, um, by being remote or just trying to figure out how?
So one of the reasons, um, at the five, six school that we actually put in the, um, remote learning center was that that, that is also an option, right? That you can, and we still have room in the remote learning center. Because of five, six, we, you know, we know that that is still, uh, an age, um, that, you know, that children need to, um, be cared for. Right? So it's not always possible for at home. So that's why we opened that option up. Uh, the, and of course our elementary's in full, full-time. So, um, that was okay. So that's why we, uh, offered that.
But that's just for Falmouth.
It is just for Falmouth.
Bill and then John.
Yes, a concern that I have in looking at the numbers is I, I think we need to project this over a period of time. And obviously we hope we stay in the green zone. But I would like to know, again, a period of time as to are kids coming off the remote to come into hybrid? Or are they going off in-person to hybrid to go to remote? And I, I kind of like to look at those numbers, again, not in two weeks. I think maybe in a month, we'll get a better understanding of kids wanting to come off remote, be more involved or whatever. Uh, but, but I think we need to follow.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And we're, we're tracking almost daily, um, uh, getting those numbers because of the, at the elementary level, we're seeing more move from remote to in-person. Um, but we see more at the high school level move from in-person to remote.
Yes.
So, um, but, but we are going to track that. I'll absolutely give updates, um, you know, at least monthly, um, on, on those shifts.
And, and second follow-up, I'm doing another follow-up. I'm just trying to keep up with you, which is impossible, but I'm working on it. A second, a, a second question would be on the special needs kids that are, should be totally in person. When was that started? Uh, and, and how was that progressing? And I think we need to follow up on that consistently because I think those kids need all the education they can get.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we agree too. So, um, you know, there's, um, students that, um, the IEP teams, we had not together made the decisions of, you know, that the students needed to be in, um, full-time. We have the sub-subert programs that are in full-time. Uh, we may have, um, uh, homeless students that, um, we felt what was, um, right for them to be in full-time. And so, uh, so basically a lot of our vulnerable students, um, we made that offer. Right now, we want to make sure that we get in-school and that we are, um, track because they've been out. We didn't want to use the spring, um, as a determinant of whether students should be, um, full-time or not full-time starting this year because it's completely different. In the spring, um, we didn't have grades. We didn't take attendance. Um, you know, the expectations were, were different. Now, uh, we are fully set up to teach all of our remote students. We have them all connected. We spent a lot of time over the summer. So they're connected. There's accountability. And we want to see how the students do, um, remotely now, um, when we're in. And, and then start making decisions, um, if students, if there are students that, that really live in it by being in both weeks.
Good.
John?
Um, I can understand why, uh, some parents would have a, a challenge with that dynamic. Uh, but I also understand the reason why we're doing it and it, and it does make sense to do it. Uh, with regards to the question about the other districts, I would really put the onus on the individual that's, has their kids in the other districts. We don't need, you don't need another thing that you now would advocate to another district for them. I mean, they, they wasn't, uh, able to say Falmouth has the precedent of doing this. If they're in Bourne, for example, then they could go to Bourne and say, would you be willing to do this, you know, like Falmouth does? But I, I don't want to add another thing for you guys to do.
Melissa, tie your hand up.
Uh, I'm good.
Okay.
Yep, that's okay.
I don't know if this should belong in the follow-up section at the end, but since we were talking about looking ahead and seeing how it's going, have we looked at all in gaps that may have occurred in the curriculum because of the spring? Are we going to look at that? And I mean, down the road, we have SATs and MCAS things. And I mean, I'm, I am confident they'll be more gentle. But I mean, I just wondered, how are we looking at that? Are we gonna, gonna look at it?
Absolutely. Um, I don't know if, uh, Dr. Tyler would like to, uh, speak now or if she would like to wait until we could actually do a presentation at our next meeting. Um, but, um, Dr. Tyler, would you?
Well, she's going to do it next meeting then.
Yeah. To say something now, but she's smiling. She's leaning in. She's.
I can just share a couple, um, quick, um, glimpses into the, the work that we're doing. So we're going to be continuing in the elementary grades up through grade six with our A reading and A math, which is our fast benchmark assessment. The window for that actually opened today and it's open for about four weeks. And then we're going to continue with our common assessments that we develop within the departments at the upper grades. So we're looking at that timeline and I have a meeting with the department. It's on Friday to go a little bit, um, into that with some greater detail around the expectations in different departments for what skills they're going to narrow in on. Obviously, we didn't have both the spring MCAS data, nor did we have the spring common or benchmark assessment. So we're going to be comparing last winters to this fall's and working around calibrating, uh, how to work with that gap in data and, um, determine the story that it tells us about where to, where to go with our instructional direction. So that's just some, some quick information, just to kind of put it out there and let you know the direction we're headed.
One thing in particular, I think about little kids learning to read. I wonder if that was a big area that had setbacks. Yeah.
So I know that, um, our team of, um, reading specialists, as well as all of our elementary educators, kindergarten, uh, to grade three, started to go through and unpack foundations. We had purchased foundations in large part, um, in our work with our elementary literacy manager last year and evaluating with our grade level leaders, um, to fill in a gap with phonics instruction in the earlier grades. And it's expanded a little bit in terms of how we're using it around being able to support, um, some wider, um, gaps, both in phonics extending into some handwriting work. We had conversations with Dr. Woodward and our team of OTs and kind of looking more broadly. Um, and on top of that, our reading specialists are also, um, supporting our assessment of DIBELS right now in the earliest grades so that we can bring all of that data together to inform our practices. And then we're continuing on with the work that we do through our Title I services, um, and trying to get all of that up and running, both with our in-person students as well as any students who might qualify for services who are exclusively remote learners. So it's definitely a difference in our practice and service delivery, but we are working to be able to provide that to our students to keep them on track and on positive progress in their education.
Thank you. Okay. So next, review superintendent's evaluation timeline. Very quickly, um, mid-cycle evaluations are due January 7th, which seems far off. It's not. It'll be here in a minute. Um, and this year is unusual because normally we get to actually attend things in-person to see Lori in action. Um, but thankfully, we have many forums available on YouTube. If you want to pick a forum that already occurred and sort of evaluated from that standpoint. Um, and then also Lori will keep us informed of any. Um, and then also Lori will keep us informed of any upcoming events that we could also observe as well. Absolutely, yeah, see how that goes. And this year, um, the evaluations are going to be sent to Lisa. Once they make sure you pick the Lisa Hart with the little, um, sign, your school committee sign in there, there are two Lisa Harts. That's really confusing and awkward if you send it to the wrong one. So make sure you pick our Lisa Hart. So again, um, uh, the, the observations are due January 7th. And that's a very quick update on evaluation. And then, next, act on changes to school committee's schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. This is in your packet. One date that we have to look at is the November 16th originally. Um, we had a school committee meeting on November 9th, which was the original date for town meeting. And we are proposing that we move it to the 16th to have that consistency of meeting right before town meeting was necessary. So is there a motion to approve the changes to school committee's schedule for the 2020-2021 school year? I'll make a motion to approve the changes, the 2021 school year. Just a second. Okay, so it's a roll call vote, because we're still doing Zoom. Are there any questions?
Yes.
All right.
I was wondering about, um, if we've heard anything about town meeting, about, um, if that gets changed? Do we keep these dates? Are we, would we still be meeting or are those two things tied? And so it's going to fluctuate depending on what happens?
Right, great question, and I'm glad you asked that. So it is tied, this Monday meeting is tied to town meeting. Um, and so we will have to, but last thing, I think this was the confirmed date for town meeting. So we should be good to go with the 16th.
So, can I just follow up? Um, so, um, do we know, I guess, just considering location and how many groups tend to meet that same day? Like that, you know, the space that we have, if it's also going to be here again?
Most likely here, but I think we're still in the confirming, we're in the confirmation stages for that piece. It was just more important to set the date right now and then also figure out the, I want to know where to.
Sure. Do, do we usually only have one meeting in November? I looked at that and I said, there's only one meeting in November and one meeting in December. Isn't that kind of sparse?
No, we usually have two in November and one in December.
Yeah. That's just, in two months' time, we're only having two meetings. Is that?
Can I make a note of that?
Could, because we can, we can add one in as long as we give enough notice, right?
Correct.
If you have the vote, you can code to schedule.
Oh, okay.
So you would have, you could do that on October 27th, if that's something. Yeah. For now, because it's on.
I mean, that's just a heck of a lot.
Yeah, so it's like a calendar.
Schedule, I mean, we've always scheduled this.
Yeah.
Okay, he's gonna pull up the calendar and look at this as a monthly view. So theoretically, if we're meeting on the 27th, it would be the 10th, and then again on the 16th.
Yes.
Done.
I'm good with having just the one unless there's some compelling reason that we determined we needed additional.
Yep, that's fair. So we can revisit that as necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking, we spend a good amount of time looking at the full year and the type of things that have to happen.
Correct.
And so if there's something that normally happens in there that'll impact down the road, then we might need to have it, but otherwise, I'm, I'm with what John was just saying.
Great, sounds good. So there is a motion and a second, so roll call, because we are doing Zoom. Sylvia?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
John?
Jonathan, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Leah? Oh, sorry, Lisa. And I know you for years, Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yeah.
Natalie Kowal, yes. So that way she can carry and approve the calendar.
Andrea, remember when I used to do that to you?
All right, I guess it's now, it's close enough.
It's great.
Um, so next, act on revised school calendar 2020-2021. Hey Lori.
Um, yeah, so it, it's, uh, just as a reminder, we had, uh, I'd asked you to, uh, vote the change in the calendar for September and October, um, only a few meetings ago so that we could get started. Because we had the, the PD days, the change in the start date for, um, students. So, uh, what I'm presenting now is that we had a few dates, um, that needed to be changed. So what has changed now in the calendar is that we, um, we had a full PD, uh, day, which is a district day on September 1st. We turned that into one of the 10 days that was mandated by DESI. So we needed to decide what to do with that first day. We are suggesting that in March 19th become the full PD day. Um, March, um, we don't have, um, any vacation time, recess time, um, holidays. And so we thought that that might be a nice placement for that day. Uh, then we had the two half-days. It was the September 29th, um, which we decided to forego and not, um, ask for that to be moved. But we are asking for the October 20th half-day to be moved to November 10th. Uh, October 20th is, um, is the normal day for, um, the elementary conferences day. And we do need to do conferences, but we felt like that was just too soon after we had started. So we think, uh, November 10th would be a good conference. So moving the, uh, half-day of October 20th to November 10th and the full PD day from September 1st to March, um, 19th. And we, um, uh, just are releasing it the other half-day.
Great. Uh, Leah, any questions? There's just an, an error here, a wrong date on the PD days. It says 10/20/20, move to 10, to 11/20, but it's actually 11/10. Is that right?
Okay, so 11/10, yes, it is, okay. Yeah, thank you for, um, asking. Yes, it's moved to 11/10.
11/10, thank you. Any other questions for Lori, Andrea?
Um, it, it's about something a little bit different, but since we're going with the calendar, um, in our packet was information about the state declaring Juneteenth as the state holiday. And it specifically said that even though it falls on a Saturday this year, um, I just thought that that might be something good to add to the calendar, just as a recognition of that sort of momentous, uh, new occasion.
Very timely conversation. Uh, Lori, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, so we did, um, receive information that, um, that Juneteenth, um, is on a Saturday and is celebrated on a Saturday. Um, so if, um, if, if you'd like it to be added as a recognition for this year, um, we can absolutely do that. So that is due 19th, um, of 2021.
Right, Leah, can I just ask a follow-up question to that? Um, so it is now recognized as a national holiday, which is very exciting. Um, state, state, I mean, a state holiday.
State holiday.
So, for a state holiday, and it said in the mask, um, write-up that Andrew was referring to about putting it in the calendar, it said that if it's not on a Saturday, so if it's on a Sunday, it will be cele- celebrated on Monday?
Yes.
What will that look like? Do we know in Massachusetts as far as a?
We have not received, um, guidance from DESI at this point. Um, but we will, um, so for the following year, even though we have our, uh, 21-22 calendar, um, we may need to revisit that, um, in the spring when we're, uh, looking at the 22-23 calendar as well. But at this time, I do not have any.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions relating to the calendar? I have a question.
Yes.
It was actually from a parent that I saw this morning, um, dropping off the kids. Um, will Christmas vacation, after Christmas vacation, will we pick up? So if you ended on, for example, cohort A going to school in-person leading up to, I'll leave, December 18th? Or to, excuse me, 22nd? Will cohort B begin in-person on the 4th?
I, I, I don't want to misspeak. I mean, to see our actual schedules that, um, that the schools developed.
Like, does it, am I making sense?
Yes, absolutely.
So it would be like a regular, um, weekend raid or what have you?
So the, um.
Just Karen, she was particular, just asking about like the.
I just don't, I don't recall. We get, we'll, we'll definitely get the answer to you. Uh, the, the three schools in the, um, hybrid have worked their schedules out, so they, they do all follow the exactly same. I just don't want to misspeak about what, what that is, so.
I think she was particular about a, um, appointment, but then I was also thinking of families that have homes perhaps in New Hampshire, and maybe they were going to stay and do their hybrid week up there and just sort of sinking ahead for what little benefit families have right now.
Okay, we'll definitely get the, um, the answer.
Great, thank you. Can I ask? Leah? Um, I just, I was having not the same question, but trying to figure out when all the in-person and remote days are. Um, and where do we, where do parents find that information? Would be on, because I looked at, I just couldn't find exactly what those weeks look like. Where would I find that as a parent?
Okay, so I think that, uh, I'm, sure, I think each principal sent it out, um, to the, to the schools that they have not. I will have them this week make sure all principal, or all families from the schools, uh, know exactly where it's located. And, um, make sure that you, that everybody has that, or it'll be sent out to families. Uh, I know that they've gone through and they've completed the schedule, and I believe it was sent out, but, um, again, I don't want to misspeak or, or say where it's located on each school.
Yeah, I think as a parent, I got kind of a general one. I got the specific for the first couple of weeks, and then I got a more general one. And I just, one of the questions that definitely came up for me is that, um, with Thanksgiving and then with the winter holiday, there's very short weeks there, and it's this, from what I could see if I was alternating, it was the same group that was getting the, the short weeks. So that was my, my question. So if, yes, if we get as parents, if we get the calendar, that will be really helpful for planning ahead.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Thank you. Great, any other questions related to the calendar? Bill?
Yes, on Wednesdays, it looks like we are pretty much remote Wednesdays, 5 through 12. Pretty much all, whole year, once we hit December, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't it once we hit next week?
Uh, next week, on the 21st it starts. Um, so, uh, Bill, on the 28th?
Yeah.
It's just that it's too different. Uh, the 28th happens to be a half-day for elementary, and it is remote Wednesday, um, for 5 to 12, so both colors are there. You know, it might be.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, of course, the blue is, um, recess. Um, so, and then the, um, November 18th is the half-day for elementary and remote for, uh, 5-12. So it does start, it just doesn't start looking like full.
Yes.
It's the most colorful calendar.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Wednesdays, Wednesdays.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, there a motion to, um, approve the revised school calendar for 2020-2021? I'll make a motion to approve the revised school calendar for 2021. Thank you, is there a second?
One second.
Andrea, okay, so roll call again. Leah? Can I just have a discussion about that? Just to clarify, so we're editing the 10. Thank you for saying that. The 11 tags, so we. So we're approving the calendar with an edit to? With the edit of November 10th as opposed to November 20th, yeah. And with the addition of Juneteenth, correct? Are you adding Juneteenth? With the addition of Juneteenth as well. So yes, very, thank you for that. So the motion is to approve the revised calendar with the edit of November 10th, 2020 as opposed to November 20th, 2020, and the addition of Juneteenth, um, calendar. That's a lot for that one.
Do you need to say the whole thing?
No.
Oh, no. We're just waiting for you later.
Yeah, I was just waiting. Okay, so.
Actually, further questions? So, it, when, if we're referencing Juneteenth, when it's a, a state holiday, is it going to be referenced on the list as, as Juneteenth? Or will it just say, no school seasonal recess?
This year it's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
Okay, but in the event it is on a day that there's no school, will, will it say it as its own line item or would it just say, no school seasonal recess?
I think that there is work that needs to be sort of talked through with teachers and unions about holidays and that recognition.
Right, because the reason I reference that, because there's other things on there that, that have, uh, certain definitions on there, and they're not defined.
Correct.
So, which, which, which quite frankly is why I was going to abstain on this anyway.
Okay.
You know, certain dates on there on the calendar. Um, so, but I just would say that, uh, if it was, if it was uniform, then I'm all for it. But if it's not uniform, you know, you can't, can't say, well, this one, we're going to put the name on it, but these other ones are names that we can't say.
Correct, that's it, that's a fair question.
I've been opposed to that.
Right, and, and that's fair. I think that this is fairly new, so that there are certain things that are nuanced and are still working through from the central office's perspective.
Great, thank you.
Should we hold on that until we get the language around it? Or do we need it right now?
I don't think we need it right now. How much time do you, is that something you want to hold on?
Um, we, we can absolutely hold on it if you'd like to have more information, I guess, is, is the, um.
I think that John brings up a good point. Um, and I'm definitely not trying to, um, pick up on Juneteenth. I mean, I was appalled that it's not a federal holiday, but here we have it. Um, go Massachusetts for being proactive on that. It has nothing to do with that. I just, the conformity to make sure everything is aligned the way, I don't, I don't know. Just thinking out loud.
Could we?
Terry?
Can we set the wording aside, but vote on those other dates, though?
We couldn't make it. We could revise the, the motion up.
Leah?
Yeah. Is there another page to this that does have the holidays on it?
Yes, so.
I, that, that would be the one that would be appropriate on. We don't have any of the holidays listed on here, but there is, the, the backside has the holidays. So, what, what I was envisioning is just that it would be on the list of the holidays.
Right. Yes, that's exactly where we'd put it.
Okay.
If you vote, vote on it.
Andrea?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, to bring that up, you know, that some of these are established, and this being the first time it comes on and on the heels of what we just had in our workshop where we were specifically charged with saying it's, it's times that we need to provide mirrors and also create doors. And this is one of those opportunities, and I think it's worthwhile to do it. Even going forward, we can talk about conformity with everything else, but for the first time, it's going to be on a calendar, I think that's pretty important.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, um, so that being said, revised motion to include November 10th, 20, and the, I guess I, we need to figure out where we stand on adding Juneteenth as the holiday on the holiday list, right? So, I don't, I don't want to pick up on it. I just, um, I'm, I'm all about, um, making sure everything is clear, I guess. I hear what John is saying, and I, I don't feel like if I under-revision on this, it looks like I'm trying to pick up on it or not. John?
A clarification, I'm all for adding Juneteenth on there. I was fully, uh, gonna abstain on this anyhow when I noticed two dates on there that aren't defined, that I feel should be defined. So I was, you know, the, uh, Andrea bringing up the Juneteenth actually, you know, was a dynamic that is separate from my topic of things that should be defined on there. But I was thinking that when it was going to be put on there, that it would be defined. And then the other two items would remain undefined, which is what I had a challenge with. But I was going to abstain either way on this, because I hadn't noticed in the prior passing of this that items that, that I felt should have just a little note next to them, rather than just say seasonal, uh, time off or something, you know?
Right, Leah? Is it possible, Lori, to pull up that other part of the calendar on the screen so we can see it, just so we see what that looks like? Or?
Let's see if somebody can do that.
Okay.
And a, and another follow-up, I was, I was surprised in seeing the bulletin of all the information that with regards to, uh, we had an entire list of, of one religious group's holidays, which was an entire page, and then didn't have any other religious groups' holidays. And I don't even know whether the other, you know, religious groups in town were asked, you know, I'm sure the, the one group was, you know, wanting to put it forth, which is great, and that's fine. But I think we, that shouldn't necessarily be in a group thing if you don't have other ones out there But I think we, that shouldn't necessarily be in a group thing if you don't have other ones out there or if they weren't requested.
Right, okay, is this the, so, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this would be, okay, unfortunately, that's, I can't see.
Hold on. We share the screen so everybody else can see it. Oh, you only want scroll.
So yeah, so this is what I was envisioning, that it would be just listed on, on this.
Right.
Yeah, I'm all for adding it to this, absolutely.
Right.
And if it falls on the other thing too as well.
Right, I think it's perfectly reasonable to add Juneteenth to this list, so I don't see any adversarial thoughts on that. But, um, okay, so Melissa, for the record, could you restate your motion, please?
Um, I would like to make a motion, a revision, to act on the revised school calendar with an edit to add eleven, ten, twenty and the addition of Juneteenth on the um, word side of calendar for twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second to that motion, Andrea? Okay, roll call again, Leah.
Okay, Leah, roll, yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
John.
John Fenner, yes.
Uh, Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie Calhoun, yes. Okay, not much of passes. Thank you. Okay, next up, act on appointment of the Massachusetts Association of School Committee delegate. So as we know, um, MASC needs every year for their yearly um, conference and this year it will be on Saturday, November seventh, and we send someone as a representative to vote on that. John, any question?
Well, no, I was gonna actually nominate Andrea Thoreau, because every, every time I go to the MASC meetings, she's, lives up to her namesake of being thorough, that she's actually, if she, if.
That's good, John. That's good.
But if it was a punch ticket for all of the different things, I'll go to one class and she's already been to three other classes, so I think she'd do a great job.
Excellent, yep, that was my next piece, I was gonna ask if there are any uh, nominations or suggestions and John be to that. So we have Andrea on the table, um, anyone else want to throw their name in the ring, hat in the ring? So John, would you like to make a motion?
I motion that the Fama, the school committee appoint Andrea Thoreau as our representative on the MA, a delegate on MASC.
Right, is there a second, a second thing? Uh, roll call vote again, Leah.
Leah, roll, yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
She was very excited to say yes, John.
John Fenner, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie Calhoun, yes, unanimous, absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome. It will be virtual, so.
Yes. Yeah, do a nice show.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, so that's. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, act on letter to authorize COVID nineteen test program and donation. Lori.
Uh, yes, because this isn't a donation, it, um, it is free testing, but we actually receive test kits. Uh, so, um, we um, assume the value is over the five hundred dollars and would need the vote for that. And as well, uh, in order to participate uh, in the testing program, uh, we need your approval per the contract um, with them, so, um, approval for and uh, for the donation.
Any questions?
I guess I, I have one question, just, um, I, maybe this should have been coming in that other part when we were talking about it. But I'm just wondering if um, union reps have been talked to about this and how they're feeling about it?
Uh, the, the testing piece was something that um, that has been asked for from our employees. But again, I want to remind, even if everyone is not, they don't have to participate. Um, but it's, um, but we have received um, questions about whether it's possible to have testing. And up until, um, the, the testing's quite expensive, uh, until we've had this opportunity, um, we have not been able to offer anything. So, um, we do have employees that um, uh, would like to participate. And again, since it's volunteer, um, no one would have to participate.
Okay, John.
Uh, and just a similar thing when this first came up and it, and it's sort of, uh, you know, harkens back to when Governor Baker said about all the kids having to take flu shots. Um, I, you know, I, I agree with that had to happen and to have the schools be safe. But there, you know, some parents were feeling as if, you know, what is the government going into, or the schools going into, you know, telling me what I'm gonna medically for my kid. And I'm all with Leah that, you know, I'd, I'd really, um, you know, pen any approval of any kind of a program that the unions are behind it, and I also would be really reticent about it ever turning, and I don't want it ever to turn into a mandatory thing. Uh, you know, so I, sometimes the things that are like voluntary become like a beachhead and then that, then it turns into, maybe it's mandatory, so I, I would approve the voluntary part of it. Uh, you know, with the caveat of saying, I, you know, let's keep it voluntary.
Uh, since each individual has to give consent for testing, um, well, number of philosophy, I would never actually make that happen, but, but you would have to give individual consent, so I don't think that's even possible.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other questions related to COVID nineteen test program? Okay, is there a motion to authorize, did you have a question?
No, I was gonna make a motion. On Juneteenth, separate ones, because you were saying it's authorizing doing the testing and.
Accepting the donation.
Accepting the donation.
Yes.
Which one do you want to do first?
Let's go with donation.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation for the COVID nineteen onsite testing program by Concentric, by Ginkgo.
Right, is there a second? Second, Lisa. Great, so Leah, roll, roll vote.
Actually, can I ask a question on that one? So now, is there, are there any other obligations we have to that group in accepting, it's just we accept and that's it, you know?
We accept and that's it, yes, Lori?
Uh, yes, I mean, it's, um, they, they, they're able to use Fama Public Schools as a name that has participated in the testing. That's, we have no obligation beyond this one test time, other than they'll be able to, to say that we, we participated.
Cool, thank you.
Leah. Sorry, I have one more question, and it's just because in my, the district that I work, we've been able to provide testing there for asymptomatic. And one thing, I, I'm wondering, does the company get paid for doing the test, do you know?
So this is um, a, um, it is a five oh one C three, it's a nonprofit organization. Um, the immune observatory, uh, organization, um, so, uh, this, this, my understanding that, no, there's, um, I, 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 that's the information that's given to us, can I, I just do want to add that I, I did have, um, the town attorney Frank Duffy read, um, the, the contract, and the only thing that he came back with is that he, um, it was necessary. He was okay with it as long as the school committee, um, signed on to it. So he, he had no concerns, um, he went through, there were four or five things he just wanted to point out to make sure I was aware. One of them was that they can use our name as a participant in the, um, and there was, he had a question about, um, the portal that, uh, the government, whether it was, uh, through Concentric or if it's third party. They did answer that, there was no uh, additional approvals that needed to be, um, with that. And so I just wanted to let you know that it has been, um, that and through, um, Frank Duffy, and he was fine. Um, with the words as long as the school committee's voting.
I ask a follow-up to that, so if they are make, if, if the company makes a profit on each of the tests, if there's something that comes from central government or in some way, what would, would that impact our ability to do this or would that impact a contract? I'm just wondering, if they're making a profit, does that then put us in a situation where it might be?
Uh, yeah, I can answer the, I can answer this question, it does not look like anybody is making that, I can't ask that, nor did, um, Frank Duffy bring that up as a concern, when you read it that way.
So I, I, I just, I've gotta say that I do have a little bit of a concern with that, not having that answer, just to ensure that we can do this in the right way and that there isn't a conflict.
A conflict in case they make money on the process of testing our staff?
Yes.
That's, that's a good point to, would, would we then be obligated to do kind of an RFP process to so, solicit bids for doing that if it was a profit-driven?
Well, and to just be transparent that they are making a profit by, and I don't know if they are.
Right, is there a way to figure it out?
Lisa, is it?
Isn't this a donation?
It is a donation, it's com.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
And then, I think, if I have a C three.
It's, I mean, it's a donation, so I say we say thank you and move on. Because I, would you even be able to get that answer, um?
Right, um. Didn't you indicate that this was a push from Dylan Fernandez as well?
Yes, right, um, he's the one that brought it to us, was our person of Fernandez. Um, I did, like I said, um, Frank Duffy read everything, I don't know, I mean, that was not even a concern of his. Now, the only thing about costs is there's no cost to us, um, or to, to our faculty or staff. Um, there's, and like I said, it, um, the immune observatory is a nonprofit five oh one C three organization. Um, it just, it says they're dedicated to testing in Massachusetts, making it more broad. Um, Ginkgo is the ones that's, um, providing, uh, the tests, right?
Yeah, I think there's.
There's just, there's just nothing here on, uh, for me to be able to answer that.
Right, and I think another thing we should think about is in terms of access, right? We always speak about equity and access, so this is a way to have our staff members receive COVID testing onsite easily at no cost to them, so I think we do need to factor that into the equation as well. And yeah, my concern is not at all about that, that's not, I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a awkward position if it is, if they are receiving money for the tests.
Wouldn't they then, as a five oh one C three, get into trouble with the, um, ethics and law with it? I, I don't really know a lot about them, other than.
I, I haven't, I, I don't know how to have this conversation, because I'm not a lawyer, so I, I have no idea, Melissa, I don't, you know.
Well, Mr. Duffy, if Mr. Duffy signed off on it, I think we should definitely leave it at that.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm comfortable approving it, but these questions that Leah brings up are good ones. I think that, you know, postscript that we can say, you know, that we are very transparent and then should anything arise, so I, I don't think, I don't think there's anything wrong with approving it, but I don't think there's anything wrong with bringing up, you know, questions that could protect us in a way.
I think Leah's questions are related to, um, can be related to procurement laws. So the, Lisa brought up the, the primary answer to all this, it's a donation. So even if somebody did, let's say, in the worst-case scenario, somebody did get reimbursed for this, well, it's still free to us. So there, so in a scenario that, let's say, a year from now, we decide that we as a district want to procure testing. Um, then we would, we would need to put out an RFP and that kind of thing. You know, the answer to, uh, any RFP, that, you know, a response that is free, it's kind of the best you're ever going to get. Um, so I, I would encourage, uh, and then more importantly, are, other than it being listed as free, the other thing is that Frank Duffy did review this. And, um, he understands mass procurement laws and, uh, has been going through these types of things for many, many years. So I think it, it would be, um, of great benefit to the school district to try to move forward with this.
Okay, thank you, Andrea, thanks, thank you. So we have a motion on the table to, um, accept the donation of the COVID nineteen test program, we have a motion and a second, so roll, roll vote, Leah.
Hmm, um, so, so I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I do, I really would like that answer around if there is a profit from the testing, so I'm voting yes, because I think that this is very important for our staff, but I just, just would like that question to be answered.
Yes.
Yes, Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
John.
John Fenner, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie Calhoun, yes. And then part two of this is a motion to authorize the COVID nineteen test program, is there a motion for that piece of it?
I'd like to make a motion for that piece.
Great, Melissa, is there a second? I, uh, roll call, Leah?
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Keith, yes.
John.
John Fenner, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa Hart, yes. Natalie is a yes, has the M, that's okay, so thank you. So conduct routine business, approve the minutes of September eighteenth, were there any edits to this, uh, meeting? Minutes of September eighteen? I'm just starting. Um, is there a motion to accept the, uh, to approve the minutes from September eighteenth, twenty twenty?
I'll make a motion.
Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Bill. Okay, so Leah? Yes.
Bill. Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
John.
John Fenner, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
And I'm abstaining, because I was not at that meeting. So next up, um, to approve minutes of September twenty-second, twenty twenty, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, September twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Terry.
Second.
And again, roll call, vote, Leah?
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
John.
John Fenner, yes.
Uh, Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
And Natalie Calhoun, I am a yes. Next up, to improve the minutes of September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Andrea. Um, let's just, uh, Lisa, okay, so, uh, Leah?
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
John.
John Fenner, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah, I'm Lisa, I will get this eventually, oh, gosh.
Lisa Hart, yes.
I feel so. Okay, Natalie Calhoun, yes.
Awkward.
Awkward.
No, it is an awkward, because when I was the chairman, you.
You blends together, you have, you know.
That's why I always say, everybody on this committee should be a chairman for one time, because you have a, just a massive things to cover, or superintendent.
Yeah.
Massive things to cover.
No, but that, that's particularly bad that I can't. I come back.
They've been friends forever.
Yeah.
Just to call, Leah, so don't do that, we see Andrea here.
Touche, very good. Report from the chair and committee member reports, um, nothing to report, I hope Kelly is enjoying her week away. Um, any committee member reports? Terry.
I don't have a report, but are we, are we gonna do, um, follow-up things or?
Sure.
Because it isn't on there, so.
How about we do reports and follow-up? So, would you like to, uh, have a follow-up?
I would, and, um, it's for Patrick. We've been worried about the safety aspects of, you know, getting our schools up and running. In the back of all of our heads, I'm sure, it's been, how are we gonna pay for all this stuff? And it's, it's been in my mind as a school committee person and also because I get a pension from the state and I haven't gotten, it hasn't been updated, because they haven't approved the budget, so I'm thinking, whoa, well, you know, do we have any inklings of, do you think we're gonna get help for like the extra things we have to buy or do we have money to cover our technology needs or?
Yeah, so, so, um, nothing's changed from the last time we reported, but just to, the last, over the summer, we did report there's, um, several sources of money or buckets of money other than the local, um, budget that we've been focusing on, um, using. One is the CARES Act, which runs through the town, which is FEMA slash CARES Act. There's sort of this combination of, of, of buckets of money that the town runs. The second is the COVID Relief Fund, uh, which has been the focus of, um, any additional staff, uh, we put on that. And then the third bucket of money is the ESAR Fund, which we have a longer period of time to use that money. So that, uh, is going to be sort of the, the second half of the year, that we'll use that for, uh, staff that need to be around, uh, for the second half. So we're doing pretty well this fiscal year with, um, leveraging, both the town and the schools are leveraging whatever, uh, available funds are in front of us, uh, for. are in front of us, uh, for, um, in all schools, it's not just Falmouth or, uh, or the town of Falmouth. So, um, we're doing okay for this year. Your other question about the, uh, state budget, you're right. The state budget for a full twelve months has not been passed yet. And, uh, there is some word that they're gonna try to provide some level of update, uh, to the state budget by, um, sort of the end of October, beginning of November. So we'll, we'll see if there's any update, um, in, uh, at the end of the month.
John, John first and I'm like.
Yeah, just gonna say, from the collaborative, the Star on the Waypoint Program, we're up and running, it's going well. And I just, uh, compliments Madam Vice Chair, it's eight o'clock, you're twenty minutes early, excellent job.
You're welcome. Appreciate it. Leah? So just, um, Patrick, to follow up on Terry's, would, would it be possible to just get a little presentation around how the funds have been used and what funds we've used? I think that would be really helpful, to just get a sense of where we are and what amounts we're awarded.
Yeah, well, um, we can, we can provide some updates, yep.
Okay. Okay, any other, uh, committee member reports or, or points for follow-up information? I love it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hey, is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Lisa. Roll call, yes. Thank you, Bill?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
John?
John Fenner, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie is a yes. Thank you, everyone, have a great night. Thank you, Leah.
What's the trouble, Callie, do you want it, you want?